Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for May 2nd, 2022. The mayor and councilmember Spilsbury are unable to attend tonight, and they're excused. All other members of council are present. The first item on our agenda is to review our council agenda for tonight. We reviewed it last Thursday. Are there any other questions, outstanding comments that we need to make on tonight's council agenda? No? Okay. I think we'll move forward then. So the next item is 2A.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We wanted to... There was some changes in the items for introduction, 6A. We had some conversations about the elevations of the proposed multifamily, and there's been some changes to that. So I think we just wanted to update you with that. Sorry.
Okay.
Vice Mayor. So after our discussion on Thursday, one of the things the council had asked the applicant to look into is revising the elevations because that's a sort of outstanding issue or concerns with the community. And so this is what you have seen on Thursday, and we did receive these revised elevations. My understanding from the applicant is they've shown these elevations to the residents or the community, and so far they've received positive reaction or reception to the revised elevations. We're still waiting for the final some later, but it's going to look similarly, basically what you're looking at. They have the pitch roofs, they've shown the breaks in elevation and doing everything possible to really kind of not be out of place with the community. So this is a revised elevations compared to what you have seen on Thursday.
So will this be shared with... You're saying this is being shared with the community?
The community, that's correct. Yeah.
Any comments?
I do have one. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So this has not been reviewed or seen by the community in that area?
It's been seen. That's what my understanding is. The community have seen this. They've been sharing this with them.
Okay. And there's no need for another community meeting if they're...
From my interaction with the community and all that, they have selected leaders that shares information with the rest of the community. So my understanding is they've seen this and they've shared that with the rest of the community.
So remember, tonight you're just setting the introduction for May 16th.
May 16th, that's correct.
So there could be more time in between tonight and before it comes back to council.
And I'm sure if there's more outreach, it'll happen in a couple of weeks from now.
That's correct.
So tonight, we're just introducing the development. We are not taking a vote to approve it. We're introducing it to have further discussion or evaluation, and then we'll be taking the vote on May 16th on this project.
Vice Mayor, council, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Then I... Thank you, Nana. I think we're ready to move forward then to our study session agenda, which is a presentation and to provide direction on the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department budget, including the city's special events. Andrea, welcome.
Good afternoon, council. So I have the pleasure of presenting to you the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Proposed Budget for fiscal year 2223. And at the end of the presentation, as part of our enhancement requests, there's a special events office that's included in that, and I'll explain that in much more detail at the end. I wanted to start with just an overview of our department purpose. This is our mission statement and our commitment statements. We have such a broad scope in our department, recreation, parks maintenance, facility maintenance, commercial facilities, and we really feel like our mission statement captures what we're doing in providing exceptional experiences and services to those who live, work, and play in Mesa. We're very committed to being responsible stewards of all those facilities that we take care of and program. We have infrastructure and staffing in place to provide safe spaces and places for people to enjoy, recreate, and work. And we work together, as we have over our entire history, but especially in most recent history, of changing our services to meet recent community needs. And so really proud of what we've done to provide services during the COVID emergency food operations time, and now transitioning back into full operations, full recreation programming, full levels of staffing across the board. I have a couple of performance measures to highlight on some of our areas of our department that have really bounced back strongly. Convention Center and Amphitheater being the top one at this time. Everybody's very interested in going to concerts, and the concert business at the AMP, since we started them again in August of 2021, has been amazing. We're on track right now in calendar year 22 of having the most concerts ever in our history. And so it's a testament to the staff there, the dedication that they put into providing those spaces for those types of events. We co-promote, so these are not concerts that we're booking directly, but promoters are coming to us, interested in the venue, and we're able to provide that. So the end of that chart shows that our attendance, and this is Convention Center and Amphitheater together, are really higher than they've been in a long time, for sure, but even breaking some of our attendance records from prior history and other normal operations. Convention Center events are also very strong, and we have 146 events booked from now through 2024, all different types of events. So that includes the convention business that helps fill our hotel rooms that are further out. That business has definitely been slower to recover, but it's also the consumer shows, Mesa Public Schools meetings, city meetings. Those have shorter booking windows, and we're finding we're very busy in all types of events in that venue. The Post will be part of this commercial operation as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. How many events have been booked up to date?
Through 2024, we're at 146 in the Convention Center.
So that's a lot more than we have in the past, or because of the...
We're tracking about equal to the past. It's the concert business that has gone way above and beyond what we ever had in the amphitheater before.
Great. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, of the 146 events that are booked through 2024, what's the average timeframe or span of days that are the typical? Is it like two days or three days, or is it a one-day event, or does it run the whole gamut?
It's pretty varied, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Thompson. I think the best way to say that is our booking windows that are further out tend to be the ones that are using more of the facility multiple days, using room nights in the hotel next door. And then the more immediate ones up through about 18 months out tend to be consumer shows, and then most immediate are the local focused meetings. But those tend to be single-day events, get into consumer shows or through the weekend. Convention business, those further bookings are the multiple night, multiple venue types of events.
Okay. Thank you.
The next one I wanted to highlight, and kind of a continuation of a discussion we had last year, were the park rangers. So we've increased our park ranger force from seven to 12. We were able to go through that hiring in April of 2021. And so the park ranger presence out in the park system has increased exponentially as a result of that. So it's allowing us to have multiple rangers on duty at the same time, more coverage throughout the day into the evening, and it's having an incredibly positive impact in the park system.
Andrea, how many parks do we have? I should know this.
We have about 200 properties, parks and basins. And so they're spread through... It's about 2,000 acres.
Okay, that's a lot. So do we have full-time park rangers at some parks?
Vice Mayor, they are all full-time staff, but they do not stay at one park full-time.
Okay, so they rotate among all the...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Athletic field rentals. Again, we're seeing a huge amount of interest in booking our fields still, and we had a lot more exposure over 2021 when our facilities remained open, and we saw a lot more types of tournaments and community groups come in and using our facilities at that time, getting exposure to our facilities, and then they're still coming back. So our field bookings, both for our leagues and for our community and for tournaments, is all very strong.
I have a question on this as well. At what percent of capacity do we have as far as field rentals? I see the numbers here, but I don't know if that's if we're at full capacity, 80%. I know some fields or some demand has been higher than we've had fields for. I know we're expanding, but can you give me a feel for what these numbers represent as far as capacity?
Vice Mayor, I don't know the answer to that. We are still trying to calculate a capacity type number in our performance measures, and so I don't have that information readily available. We'll say it varies by sport, and so full-size baseball fields, adult-size baseball fields are in the most demand. They're booked out most often. Soccer fields tend to have tournaments booked in there and then community use, so we find one or two fields on some nights, and then other nights, the entire complex and multiple complexes are booked. And then the youth baseball, softball fields, it varies by season, and so I know we have parts of the year where those facilities stay more empty, and then this time of year in particular, they're all full.
Go ahead.
How are you doing on staffing for the parks, Andrea? I mean, do we have any cancellations for any of the programs because you don't have enough staff?
I have a slide and a couple more, but to answer your question quickly, we're doing pretty well on staffing. So we have not canceled anything because of staff shortages.
Well, I saw the hiring here, the hiring, but I'm thinking all year round, you're talking about summer hiring. So...
So...
I mean, we have programs all year round.
No, no, but I think what's remarkable is Andrea's really led the way in being very aggressive right up front early on to staff up, and I think they're still hiring, but there are some communities in the valley that are not going to be able to open up pools because they just don't have enough staff, and we're not doing that.
Right. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we have full programming, so we are not canceling programs or shutting facilities down because of staffing shortages.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah. It's pretty remarkable.
Okay.
Bounce back for a second to aquatics attendance. Just to show you, 2021, we had reduced capacities because of COVID and staffing restrictions, and we're trending higher than that so far this year and expect it to be very popular all through this summer. Again, just to highlight, we started summer registration programs on April 18th, and in that first week, we had 43,000 registrations for our 2,600 summer programs. The Mesa Recreation Scholarship is funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and so that gives a 50% discount to qualified families for all youth programming. We had 384 families so far pre-qualified for that, and then they're registering for multiple programs from swim lessons to camps to tennis lessons, anything that's a youth-focused program. We've brought on board almost 200 new staff, adding to our existing staff, and so right now we're at 576 staff for this summer. We're hoping to hire about 25 more, so we're pretty close. The additional staff that we're looking to hire are really in our camp and adaptive programs. We are fully staffed now for aquatics. The next three slides are a snapshot of our budget. So the first one is our revenue overview for our recreation, parks, and commercial facility side of our business. And so our year-end estimate is higher than what we anticipated in large part because of grants. So we received a $1.8 million shuttered venue operating grant for the amphitheater. I think Arts and Culture talked about the grant that they received last week when they talked to you, and then a few other smaller grant programs that have been received through the years. In addition to that, the amphitheater revenue is driving this for sure, and the popularity of our athletic field rentals. And so we're expecting full revenue through this summer as well.
Andrea, so on the Convention Center Amphitheater revenues under the 2122, going from 3.1 on the budget to the estimate, that's including the $1.8 million that's from the shuttered...
Vice Mayor, correct, yes, that's part of that $5.4 million number.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And then looking at our expense side in the same business areas, our total for the next fiscal year, we're requesting $42.4 million in those operations. That includes the increases in our operating budget for the increase in costs for the year, and it also includes our special events enhancement requests and ice rink enhancement requests that I'll talk about here in a minute. On the facility maintenance side, the 2223 proposed budget, $21.7 million, that includes our infrastructure budget. So that's infrastructure replacement, maintenance costs that we budget for in our operating budget, and then as we execute on those projects, similar to the Mesa City Plaza projects that we outlined last week, those monies get transferred into the projects. And so this is not that large of an increase on our operating budget, it's just the money starts in the operating budget and then goes into the projects. So we have two enhancement requests to talk about today. The first is the ice rink contract for Mary Main Street, and the second is the special events office that we're going to talk to you about establishing. For the ice rink, this is the new configuration. It's about 1,000 square feet bigger than when it was set up on sand on the parking lot. And so we went out to RFP last year. We went, came to you and requested approval for the new ice rink configuration contract. That is an increase of about $100,000 from prior, from the prior configuration. And so this is an enhancement request to fully budget for that entire contract amount. And for comparison, on the bottom there, I have the revenue that we received just from skaters on the ice for the last three years. And in the 2021 winter, fiscal year 22, we saw a huge increase in the number of folks there. Again, the rink itself was bigger, we had greater capacity, we were no longer restricting how many people could be on the ice, and it was almost $160,000 in revenue just from skaters.
Expense, just with the additional numbers. If it would not rain and would just be cold, we could probably pay more money.
We like the rain, though, too.
Well, I know, but when it gets on your ice, it's kind of slushy.
Councilmember Freeman has a question.
So when it's not an ice rink, what type of programming will be there underneath where the ice rink would be?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we have a really important discussion and partnership that we have in place, and we've been talking, waiting for the plaza to open back up again with ASU, with Downtown Mesa Association, with the Art Center, with our staff, to activate that space as much as possible. And so the screen is going to be an important part of that. Special events, Downtown Mesa, having events based out of there, just low-key events, things that people feel comfortable doing in that plaza to anchor the downtown area and to link that whole corridor together in activity. So it'll vary a lot. ASU will be an important part of that, but we'll have other types of programs going in there as well. But in terms of what our department programs right now, it's Mary Main Street and then supporting what other types of activities can be brought in by our partners.
So it's still further to be discussed?
Yeah.
So is there a charge for programming? If somebody wanted to hold a program there, would there be a charge?
Like a rental of the plaza?
Like rental of the ice rink area?
Correct. There are rental rates for it.
Okay.
So our priority is to have events in there that are beneficial to the whole community and not closing the space for public use. And so as we look at and evaluate, that's why we have this partnership in place with all those entities, is to make sure that it's a welcoming space and activating space for everyone and not a private party reserved space, so to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
We're still learning. We're going to go through the process.
How soon would the fencing come down along Main Street so you can actually see it?
I'm hearing that we will be ready to open it in June, but I don't have a firm date yet.
Okay.
Still trying to plant the grass. All right. So the second enhancement request is to establish a citywide special events office. And so this is an introduction to this topic. We have two full-time staff currently in our department that support events that are happening in the park system. And as we started to look at how much event business has come back in the park system and across the whole city, we started to think that we needed more resources put to this to provide better customer service, to provide more clarity on how to have a special event in Mesa. Most of what I'm talking about's in the park system, but really it goes into what the special event license requests that come into Business Services are what they're seeing as well. And so what our proposal is, is to create the citywide special events office with 9.6 FTEs instead of the two that we currently have. We're seeing about one to three events every weekend through the whole year, just in the park system. The Business Services Office is getting five to 10 special event applications, license applications every week. Those applications need to be reviewed by multiple city departments, and more information goes back and forth in trying to coordinate whether it's barricading needs, security needs, how to get trash services in there, and then communicating back with the applicant if we need more information or if they need to follow up or provide more detail. So back and forth. That function currently is absorbed by many departments across the city, and so we're trying to centralize that with this office. On top of that, the number of events that are happening in the park system, we're stretching our staff really thin, trying to make sure that the events that are happening there are safe. The other areas of the parks where the events are located are still open to the public and safe spaces for those folks not involved with the events. So we have to have a staffing presence there as well. And we believe that the 9.6 FTEs will help us staff what's happening in the park system and help coordinate those license requests that come in through Business Services. So what we're suggesting wouldn't change the licensing requirements for the city. It wouldn't change the permitting requirements for having a special event in the park system, but we'll put more resources in place to be able to be clear on what the requirements are, communication channels more established, to be able to answer questions about that, and provide some guidance, both for other city departments that are involved as well as the applicants. So we went through and took a look at the past year and what types of events that we have. We have city-sponsored events, which are fully embraced and supported by city departments, not just Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities, but also Transportation Department, Mesa Art Center, Falcon Field. And we're looking to consolidate what's happening with parades and with the Public Information Office into this office as the sponsoring department. And so all the logistics are handled by city departments for these city-sponsored, this category, and all the fees are paid through the city departments that are sponsoring the events. These are engaging events, creating a sense of place for the community. Celebrate Mesa is our flagship one that we've had through our department up to this point. Mary Main Street's been part of that in partnership with the Public Information Office. The Martin Luther King Parade and the Veterans Day Parade are part of this. And then I Love Mesa Day, Celebration of Freedom, and then the Mesa Art Center events. And so this would provide a centralized location for information flow and for the ones that are sponsored by Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities, this department would be the key contact and key coordinating department for each of those. And there's city-supported events, and these tend to vary year to year. And so we're looking at creating some parameters and explanation of process around these. I don't have the staff in place yet. This is going to be a work in progress. And so the idea would be if we're waiving fees, if we're providing equipment like the ban shell or the bleachers, if we're providing electrical equipment, spider box connections, that if the city is providing some level of support for an event, it would fall under this category, but there's still a private outside group involved as the host. And then the last category, private events.
Oh, you want me to go back? Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Andrea. This makes a lot of sense to me because I know it's been a hodgepodge of different departments trying to run events. I remember Steve and Jesse running some events, and then there's all these events all over the place, but there's no real centralized department that can coordinate this. So having your department or whoever coordinate this, to me, makes a lot of sense. Now, are you thinking that this... Where would this office... I know you're still working through this. Are you... Would this office be in City Hall, would be over down Center Street, or... Maybe I'm jumping ahead.
No. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we're looking at locating it out of our office on baseline at 708. And there's space for this staff in that location, and then it would be part of our commercial facilities division. Same as the Convention Center, the Post, we're managing the event coordination for the plaza at Mesa City Center. Those operations, those commercial operations, it would be part of that organizational structure.
So anybody wanting an event here in the city of Mesa would just go straight to your office, and then you would coordinate it and take care of the whole thing?
Well, the request for a special event license still exists in Business Services, and so the process would start there. But then having the coordination effort of getting feedback from different city departments that need to review that and communicating back with the applicant would be in this office.
Well, for example, Run Third Mesa, they called me because they were, there was issues as far as permitting and stuff. So you would take care of that as well in terms of issuing the permits for these events to take care of?
The Business Services Office would still issue the special event license. Parks will still issue the permits for events that only exist in a park, 100% contained within a park. And so there are some that have both types of park permit and a special event license, and that coordination effort would happen in our department, but the license is still issued by Business Services.
At the end of the day, this will lead the city. So even though it's in a department and we have specific processes and business licenses or in a parks, the person who leads this will become that special events person. But as you can see, the list of events, and this is just a fraction, right? And part of our challenge is that over time, and the council recognizes this, some of these events have come up through, whether it's public information or transportation or parks, and there's kind of been, you know, organically grown all over the place. It's becoming difficult because while we need to be very careful, we want to make sure we provide for community engagement and opportunity, we have to make sure it's safe, we have to protect the assets that we own, and we need to be fair and equitable because we're finding some of these events have historically been developed and created and consume a lot of city resources, but it's, I don't know that we, the council understands how much we're committing, and it's not necessarily advertised as a public event, it may be more of a specialized for one part of the community. We've got, we need to, we need to come back to the council with a policy and kind of be very just transparent about the resources we have and suggest that maybe some of the historical events, maybe we've got to decide if that's what we're going to always do and do we, how do we do it across the whole city? Because we want to be careful we're not allocating all our resources overly in one part of the city and not another. And so we've got a lot of work, but the first thing we need is the resources to kind of put our arms around it. And then we're going to come back in each one of these areas, we're going to come back to council and say, here's what is the best way to manage this, we believe, and making sure, even the council understands, because we get requests from the community on a variety of different things, and they sometimes just expect us to show up at no cost to them. And we can't just allocate our ban shell or power supplies or whatever without some level of staff being involved and delivering it. And the question is, well, when should we just do that? and delivering it. And the question is, well, when should we just do that for the community? And how does that compete with other demands throughout the city? Plus, we also need, what's important for us is a calendar and a schedule. Turning these things around quickly is very difficult. So we want to come back with a policy and kind of put everybody, I mean, we're going to keep doing the way we're doing it for now, but we are learning from this, and it will help us in the policy to say, listen, maybe this is a limitation, what we can do for any one group outside the city. Here's how far out you need to schedule it, and maybe here's part of your financial responsibility along with that. Because it's, while it's a city asset, you know, once we use it at one location, it's not available to go anywhere else. So we, we're going to have to work through all those issues.
Would you be doing this for internal departments as well? Because, for example, the, the Bike and Pet Program, they have a movie at the park. Will they go through you and then you deal with, work with them, or?
I, I know this was internal, but then?
Correct. It, it does still have a coordination effort through this office.
Right.
Especially when Bike and Pet events happen many times in parks, and we're providing equipment to help support them. And so it's to coordinate that and to make sure that we have enough information to establish the policy, the priority behind it, the staffing that we need to put in place to support it across the board.
With, without having this, we're feeling sometimes the growing frustration of people who just expect us in a month's time or six weeks to drop everything and, and come to their van. And that's very difficult, and sometimes there's conflicts there. So we're going to try to establish a policy that puts out those kind of requests, say, you know, you have to give us this much notice, and if you're this kind of, you know, if you're, is a private and party or nonprofit, mate, there's got to be a little bit maybe more, you know, equal contribution. We need to talk to council about how we allocate that across the city, because I am concerned sometimes we seem to have events only on one side of the parts of the city. We need to figure out if, if there's a way to deal with that, too.
So Chris, with that said, you know, some of these events rely on city resources to, to provide them. So I think we need to be careful on how we do it. And so we support our community organized events, because sometimes you have a tool in the toolbox that others don't have, or even a third-party vendor.
I, I don't disagree, but I do think it's important that, that we're very transparent about how much we're allocating to some of these events and making sure the council's comfortable that we're doing that. And if council in other districts also wants to do something, how do we, how do we manage that? I just don't want, you know, I want everybody to feel like they have the opportunity to have the, the tools and the toolkit available, right? It can't just be to one or a few parts of the city. It needs to be, because if someone says, well, I didn't know that I could call and get the band shell for the weekend, you know, because no one's ever brought it up, it's never come up. So those kinds of things, because we're now getting that, because the demand is so much. Now we are getting people asking us, well, no, it's allocated over here. Okay, so where, where, where we need to come up with a policy, we understand there's some historical events in here, but we're going to have to look forward to making sure everybody understands what our commitment is going forward and making sure everybody's comfortable with that.
And real quick, just the last category that I have in here are private events. These are in large part happening at Eastmark and Riverview. They're the fundraising walks, they're the Eastmark Community Life Events. Those are fully supported by those third-party organizations, and we're involved to make sure the park is available, the park is safe, the equipment that they need to have to support, the number of people that they're going to have in there is available for the folks attending that and that the park resource is protected as well. And so all costs associated with these types of events would be fully absorbed by those event promoters. All right. So we have staffing that would need to be in place to be able to create the rest of these policies and procedures around that. So this is a beginning point for us. And then there will be many more conversations to establish more clarity on what the special event process is, what level of support the city can provide, what level of expectation we have on the folks that are requesting the events, both in the park system and through just a special event license request in Business Services.
So just to summarize, we're going from two full-time to nine?
Correct. It's seven full-time and then some part-time staff to support.
Right, to handle the special events. And are we allowing special events in neighborhood parks? Not the big parks, but neighborhood parks, is that a consideration?
Vice Mayor, we do now, if there's enough support for the size of crowd that people propose to bring. And so if porta-johns are needed, if additional trash services are needed, if parking is available, we will consider them now in a neighborhood park. But most neighborhood parks are too small to be able to handle a large community-wide event. Parking and restroom facilities tend to limit those.
But we would consider the smaller events, given the consideration each park's capacity and amenity to support it.
Sure.
A neighborhood park that's supporting a neighborhood level of event is appropriate. And if the organization that's organizing it is capable of providing insurance and the rental of equipment needed to support it, we will consider it.
Okay, okay. Can you just review for me? Because I, over the past months, there was interest in community events in our neighborhood parks. And there is a way to have maybe some events without permitting, like just a small private gathering to kind of differentiate how you can activate, or not activate, but use the park in order to support, you know, your own gathering versus being a, a public gathering, to kind of review that, since there's been some confusion about that.
Vice Mayor, we have a brochure posted on our website now that explains that to some extent. So the code changes that we did in the park rules last year, last summer, define that if you're bringing unrelated people, members of the public into a park for a specific purpose, you have to have a special event permit in the park. If you're having a family gathering, scout troop gathering, a teen gathering, and you're just reserving a Ramada, it's a simple Ramada reservation, and it's handled in a much toned-down manner that that park can support. When the group gets larger, more restroom facilities are needed, more parking is needed, it kicks over into, and more folks of the public are invited and not associated with the organizer directly, then it's a special event permit. But there is a brochure on our website that explains that now.
Okay, differentiate. But is possible to apply for a special event permit in a neighborhood park, or no?
It is possible, and then we have those requirements in place. So we still will need insurance coverage, we'll still need support facilities based on the size of the crowd.
So we're clarifying the difference and what's allowed for clarity, but we're not changing any policies. Is that correct statement?
I would say we're not changing any code with this effort. We are going to be writing policies and procedures to be, have more clarity and more visibility on what a special event is and what is required.
Great.
And what the city can provide.
Yeah. Okay, I think that'll really help the neighborhoods. Any other questions? Councilmember Horede?
On this issue, expanding staff, are we expanding the equipment that we have as far as, what is that called? The stages?
Shell.
And shelves, right? Are we looking to expand? I'm assuming streamlining this function, hopefully we can have more accessible kind of equipment throughout the different events that will pop up during the year.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Horede, right now we are not proposing to increase equipment available. The equipment that we have is sufficient to support the events that we're producing in our department and not to serve as a rental function for other outside events.
Okay.
But that goes to the question of policy, is how we allocate that across the city? Because councilmembers will have events you want to be part of and support, and we've just got to figure out how we make that equitable for every councilmember, and, and having the schedule for those events so we don't overlap and all those kinds of things.
Okay. And then a question on the amphitheater. Do we have the capacity, given the, just the, the location and as far as the equipment, and if we're seeing more bookings, do we, are we anticipating in upgrading the amphitheater? Or is there, do you expect more bookings to happen over the next two years? I'm assuming there's a outlook as far as when folks are wanting to maybe book the amphitheater. Is that a thought as far as maybe improving the amphitheater, or is that, any discussions there?
The amphitheater capacity is at five thousand, based on the physical space inside the fence and available parking around it as well. And so while we've used some of the shuttered venue grant dollars to do improvements, it's not to expand that capacity. We're still very large in comparison for outdoor venues, and there are only a couple other venues that are larger than us in the state. So inside venues then being much more limiting, but at this point, we're not looking at expanding that.
As far as the current, the current makeup inside, is there any conversations on improving kind of the, the environment of the amphitheater, or is that?
Well, we've, actually during COVID, we took the opportunity to paint it and do some other aesthetic improvements out of, out of the amphitheater. What we don't, won't do, we haven't decided, we haven't done, and we probably by practice won't do, is add a lot of the other amenities, like the sound systems and, because we found that, what I understand, is different acts kind of come in with their own systems, and it's just easier for us to deal with it that way, because whatever system we would buy would, I'm sure, wouldn't be adequate for the next, whatever group that comes in. So we kind of keep it as a, going back to where, I don't know, shell's the right word, but a very, the, the hardscaping is, as well. But as far, yeah, I don't know, is that?
It's a shell, and it, and it is based on tour, the tours and what they want to use for their types of equipment and sound system. And so that makes the rental of the equipment that they bring in specific to their show and much more tailored to what their needs are.
Okay. But as far as the seating, the grass, and I think you've done, you've done a pretty good job of keeping up with that over the last?
Right. We're in the process of trying to add a shade structure up on the upper tier, the northwest corner, where we lost some of those trees. We've put a sculpture in one of those tree stumps of a guitar. We've redone, renovated some of those restrooms, some of those types of improvements over the past year.
Okay.
Two years.
Any other comments? Okay, I think that concludes the presentation. Thank you very much, Andrea.
Thank you.
Next on our, on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, do you have things to share?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Last Friday, I attended the mayor's interface breakfast with my colleague here, Mr. Freeman. So that was great, and it was a great event. And then, of course, Friday was Arbor Day, and I got to read at Mendoza Elementary School to a lot of third readers. So it was a lot of fun.
I'll go. So I, I did read the Dr. Seuss book Friday at Curry Elementary. Today, I went with Economic Development over to Flex Print in Mesa. They're one of our 20 largest employers in Mesa, and it's quite a really great business, and learned a lot about them, support them, and let them know that the city's here to help them and assist them anytime they need. Thank you.
I will share. I haven't been busy in the community, but I did get married on Saturday. So I married Yvonne Martinez, and it was a wonderful event, and I'm so proud and filled with joy and love. And it was wonderful. So I think that's it for today's meeting. Mr. Brady, our future meetings?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So just a reminder, we do have a study session this coming Thursday, May 5. I know it's the day you all have been looking forward to, because it will be the last budget presentation from Library Services, and then, and then following that will be a budget wrap-up. We're just going to kind of give you a summary of a lot of things we've talked about, just to make sure we're all going forward, because we will be coming to you with a tentative budget and then budget adoption on June 6. And so we're requesting to make sure all of you have that date on your calendar. Mr. Luna's trying to come up with an excuse somewhere, being out of the country or whatever, but we need everybody here, because I think the mayor is not here that day, June 6. So please, please be here. We don't need an emergency meeting of the budget, but we need to prove the budget on the, on June 6, because we'll be giving notice that that will be the day for the final hearing and approval. So, yeah. Well, it's effective July, it's approved on June. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn the study session. Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Luna. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned and see you at council chambers in just a little while.